I thought it was me.
There you are. We're on.
All right, terrific. Welcome, everyone, to the October 10, 2018 Nishoba Regional School Committee meeting. This is our regular meeting. We've got a full agenda and I feel like my seat is...
Very low.
A high chair. So if anybody wants to tell me how to pull a seat up. There we go. All right, thank you. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Our first item is citizens' comments. Do we have any comments? Anne, you got any comments?
No.
Nothing here looks good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Updates from the chair. So I have a couple of things for you. The first is due to scheduling conflicts, we're going to need to reassign the emergency response liaison. Oh, you're awesome. Thank you very much. Mike Haresh is currently serving on 20 different committees, subcommittees and advisories for the school committee and we need somebody to step into that role. So I'm not going to pick anybody out, but I am going to put it out there. If you're interested in serving on the emergency response committee, that's the committee that our district nurse heads up along with the chiefs of police from all three towns and our fire chiefs. And they're the ones that are doing all that great work on safety in the schools and coordinating and efforts and things like that. So please do let me know if you're interested and then we'll take care of that at the next meeting. Okay? Oh, Mike, can you share when they meet? That might be helpful.
Roughly once a month. The last meeting was this past Monday, a week ago. What day is today?
Wednesday.
One week and a half ago. So probably another few weeks.
Okay.
I think we did it twice so far this year.
So it's less frequent than our typical subcommittee meetings, but at least as important. There's some good work there. Okay. The second thing I want to share with you is it's that time of year again where we do this every year and we talk about, we bring Dorothy Presser, our Mass Association of School Committees rep, field rep, in to speak with us about our role and our responsibilities. These would be the administration's role and responsibilities. But it's more while we go through, you know, what's our purview? What's the administration's purview? Where do they cross? It's really more of an opportunity for you to ask questions that you might have about just about anything. So there are, I had asked her if rather than set up another two-hour meeting, if we could somehow incorporate it into one of our school committee meetings. And I don't know that we're going to be able to do that because our schedule is just jammed right now. But she did give me some dates for us to consider. And let me make sure I have them pulled up. So I'm going to give those to you. And Alita, would you coordinate for us, please? Thank you.
I'll start a Google spreadsheet and I'll upload it so everybody can share it and fill in when they're, when they can.
Perfect. That's perfect. I think the first one's not going to work. So October 24th won't work either. November 12th, November 14th, is that a school committee? Oh, yeah, we're not doing the 14th. November 12th, November 15th, November 20th. That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So like show of hands, who is like not digging that scene? Because I'm not. We just lost our quorum. The 26th, which is the Monday following Thanksgiving.
And what would this be, a two-hour session?
Probably, I think she said she could, she could do it in 90 minutes.
Starting at 6?
Probably. Or the 28th and 29th of November, which is a Wednesday and a Thursday.
We just scheduled policy with her from 4 to 6 on the 28th.
On the 28th?
So she'll be here.
So why don't we look at November 12th, 15th, 26th and 28th? Unless you don't want to do, I thought you were saying you're going to be...
Oh, no, I'm just, she'll be here.
She'll be here. She'll be here so we could save her sometime.
The 12th is Veterans Day, observed, so.
So the 12th is out.
My school's open.
Well, it's, I'm good with it, but if...
I'm good with it too.
The schools won't be open?
Schools won't be open, so. Well, they will.
The building won't be open.
Okay.
They're open on Veterans Day and closed on Quorum Day, State Day, so.
Not open on Veterans.
Probably not open on Veterans. Oh, not open, okay.
All right. So how do you feel about these dates?
It doesn't make any difference, whatever. The 14th, you do have a quorum, 10th of Quorum for the 14th if that's where you land in November.
Yeah, but we've got, that was shifting all the work from one meeting to another.
I know, and it's a lot. It's a lot. It's a heavy-duty meeting.
26th is all right. Oh, man.
So let's look at the 15th, 26th and 28th. How about those dates? And just understand that the 15th would be the day after a regular school committee meeting, which is our only school committee meeting in November, which means it's going to be a juicy one, meaning a lot on the agenda.
Any of those days are fine with me.
All right. So y'all, Alita will send the link out, put your availability on there and I'll get back to Dorothy with the final answer. Okay? All right, thanks for that. We got through that. Colin Delisle, our student representative from the high school, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You want to share some stuff with us?
Yeah, I thought I'd start off with ours this time, switch it up. Then the Shova pep band is once again preparing their music for Friday's home football game. There is a friends of music meeting next week on the 15th. The fall band concert is coming up on October 24th and the fall choir concert follows shortly after on November 2nd. For sports, the football team beat Algonquin last week in their away game and they look forward to the home game this Friday against North Middlesex where the theme will be Pick Night to show support for all those affected by breast cancer. Girls soccer defeated Lemonster on their own field yesterday, 6 to nothing, and boys soccer defeated Bromfield on Monday, 3 to 1. Field hockey also defeated Algonquin last week where Natalie Brown scored her 100th career goal in high school in their 5 to 1 victory. The field hockey, volleyball and golf teams all have matches coming up on Friday and all the soccer teams will have games this Saturday. Sawyer and Hale both had cross-country meets earlier today, but Luther Burbank's race was canceled. And for events, each high school class had an assembly yesterday to go over and introduce the Alice Safety Program where they were given instructions on procedure to take and how to defend in the case of a harmful intruder. Leading up to, leading up to this football game, Nishoba has their Spirit Week including Hawaiian Day, Neon Day, USA Day and Nishoba Spirit Day on Friday. Homecoming is this Saturday night at the high school where students will gather for an exciting night of music and dancing. The DECA season has also begun for business students at the high school where they will be able to compete in business and marketing plans and projects with groups starting at the district level. If you move on from there, they will compete in Boston at the state level. And finally, they will go, if they make it to nationals, they will go to Disney and Orlando. And many middle, middle school students participated in Walk and Ride Your Bike to School today.
Does anybody have any questions for Colin? No? Thanks, I appreciate that. Feel free to stay. We'd love for you to stay unless you have a ton of homework and then...
I have to get back to rehearsal, yeah.
All right, go back to rehearsal, but thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Okay, superintendent's report.
Yeah, great, thank you. So just a couple of things to know and then I have one or two things that are off this agenda that I just want to add. So the first thing is about the town administrators' meeting. The town administrators met again this morning to talk about the upcoming budget, capital implications, growth and anticipated growth in our communities, which I'm going to come back after in a minute, establishing a date for the next tri-town meeting hosted in Lancaster. So you'll see an agenda that, or an invitation that will circulate for our next tri-town meeting and then any number of additional topics. These meetings continue to be productive and provide an excellent avenue for ongoing communication. I just want to hone in on one point and that's the growth and the anticipated growth in our communities. Bill Wrigley didn't attend this particular meeting, although he's very good about attending. But both the Bolton Town Administrator and Lancaster Administrator were there. And I know that I'm not saying something that you around the table already don't know, but I want to put it out there because I think it's important that we, we let our public know that we are anticipating substantial growth in our communities. And when I take a look, we can look at Lancaster, but Bolton is also growing substantially. And I worry about our level of capacity as we sit right now to handle the amount of growth that I see coming, particularly in terms of young families. I really appreciate the rich discussion that happened around that table this morning. It was very, very good, very, very positive. But it's clear, and you know, as we said, we don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you how many families are coming in or couples with young kids are coming in. But when you see 64 four-bedroom units, those aren't retired couples that are likely going to move into that. And when you look at the, some of the new McMansions, dare I say, that are coming up on 117th with five bedrooms, those aren't retired couples either. Do you know what I mean? So you know, I remember sitting at a school council meeting last year in Lancaster and a parent asking me and saying, "Do you understand the level of impact that this potential growth is going to have on our school district?" And you know, I was speaking with Chairman Ramosco earlier tonight and I said, you know, "We, we really have to keep our eye on that and there is no, there are no guarantees, there is no line of thinking that can say anticipate this many kids potentially in K or this many kids in grade two or this kid." There are no guarantees on this right now. And so, you know, we sat there today and simply said, "We are going to have to be really flexible through all of this," you know? And we all, you know, as a group, kind of banded together. And I know that Bill Wrigley and I've also had this kind of discussion too, but today it was just a little bit more centered on those two communities because that was who was sitting at the table today. But there's growth going in all of our communities and I think we really, really need to think long and hard about that. Also, even when we think about next steps in that potential for the high school, whether we're going to do a renovation or not, or a new school or not, it doesn't matter if there's going to be an impact there as well. So I just wanted to put that out there to say, because I do remember that coming up at school council saying, "Yes." But I haven't spoken about it and I thought today because it was such a topic for rich conversation around the table, I wanted to bring it up tonight just to put out there to say, "Know that we're thinking about this, know that we're having discussion about it."
So we just don't know what the implications are for class sizes? And if there, I mean, what, you know, do we have space for additional classrooms and...
We really don't right now. Honestly, we really, really don't. And you know, if you'll recall, I think it was last year, yes, it was last year that we had to add an extra K or, no, pre-K. I believe it was pre-K, a halftime, and we had no classroom space. And so we literally gutted a room and kind of, I think you'll recall that I talked around the table about the principals all getting together and saying, "Well, I've got some extra this, I've got some extra that." And that's how we pulled that classroom together. But we don't have extra classrooms, you know? And very often I think, you know, there's a thinking out there, "Wait a minute, this many kids, should be this many classes." They don't understand, for example, we need substantially separate classrooms, we need, we have different needs in our buildings where different students have to go off to different places or whatever. So it's not just a case of, "Oh, this is a classroom and this is a classroom and we have 50." It's not cookie cutter model that we have to think about here. We have to think a little bit broader. So no, we just have no ideas. I think we're just going to have to be really, really flexible as we move forward.
So can I ask you a couple of questions? Because I'm sure other people probably have them too. I think I know the answers, but I think for people that may not be as familiar with the process. So let's say, you know, I don't know, 65 kids move into one town and they're dispersed among, I don't know, several classrooms, ages, age-wise. We really, one of the things I worry about and one of the things that we hear consistently is the size of the classes. So that's where, I mean, I'm more concerned about, you know, what we have right now, what our structure is right now, not to mention the impact that's going to take on spend because most likely you'll have children with additional needs that will be coming. I think that's what makes me nervous is the, the size of our classrooms as they are.
And if I can just bring for that for a moment, so you're absolutely right. So for example, let's say that it's, let's say we get an abundance of children that come to grade four, for example, and reach past that tipping point where we can't have that many kids in one class. Then we're going to have to break that class up. And that's what I, when I talk about capacity, not having the extra classrooms right now, those are things that are on my mind as well. You know, it could be any class, we don't, we don't know.
And that's what happened in Bolton in mid-year. That was not pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, you had a question?
So do we have to have on our radar the possibility of even budgeting for modular classrooms if we can't accommodate for those?
That wouldn't be us, unless it's at the high school, that would be within the town.
The towns would. And I would, and that's a great question, Mike. And actually, we had a little bit of that kind of dialogue this morning as well. So that's a great question because that was some of the dialogue this morning.
And so that's a, that's a possibility, that's a reality.
But, but, but think about it too. Like, so let's say we get into that position and we do have to look into modular classrooms. You've got to buy it, you've got to install it, you've got to get it ready. I mean, Lynn would know more about this than anybody else at the table. So we just, you know, we're just going to rely on you to bring, bring updates to us as you have them, so.
As we see it moving forward, yeah.
And if we start, if it starts to look like things are moving in that direction, what do we need to do and energize? And mostly, if it's happening in the lower grades, it's the towns that are going to be swallowing it.
Yeah. But I think that they, there's a good understanding. I think there's a pretty clear understanding of that.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, well, I'm sure it is at the management level.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Right?
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
So, okay, thank you for that. Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry.
Did we discuss school choice yet and when is that coming up?
It's on Zoom, calendar.
It's coming up, the next upcoming meetings.
Just to make sure.
Yeah. But those are the kinds of things that you're, I'm glad you brought that up because those are things that we're going to need to really think about here. You know, are we in a position to do that kind of thing, seeing what we're seeing now? As I looked at those numbers this morning, those are the reality of what, you know, what's coming our way. We really have to be cognizant and I, dare, I don't want to say conservative, but I probably am being conservative right now, you know? We've got a good thing going right now and we want to continue that and part of that is going to be class sizes. Like, that's why we get the statistics we get, so.
Sorry, one more thing. Would the states solicit that kind of data in order to come to a decision based on a rebuild or, based on our school situation?
So we also had some of that discussion this morning. Again, another great question because that's exactly where we went this morning too, is that's something that we would have to take a look at, you know, asking MSBA for some additional support. Yeah, we had that very discussion this morning.
But we've missed, if you're talking about the high school...
No, I don't.
You're talking exclusive of the high school.
Yeah.
But we, we wouldn't be able to even get that going for a couple of years, right?
Yeah, because, yeah, it's, we would have to really, it's going to present some interesting challenges for us. But I would, I would say the other side of this is, I'm very excited about it. I'm excited about the growth that I'm seeing for the communities. And you know, we're up to the challenge. We'll figure it out. I'm not worried and I think we've got such great relationships around the table right now collectively, we'll figure this out.
Okay, any other questions? That was good discussion.
Sorry, that was a different topic. I'm sorry.
No, that was good discussion. I think we're all kind of antenna up.
Okay, so a second item, parent information session. I had talked last time about the fact that we, it came out of one or two meetings, but one meeting particularly where some parents had come up to us after the, the parent safety meeting and said, "Can you please present some type of a session on vaping?" Because as younger, these were younger parents who had approached us and said, "Because we really just don't know much about it and we don't know what the paraphernalia looks like, we just don't know so much. Can you please look into doing a session like this?" And so I had said to you last time that, at last meeting, that we've looked at that. So today I'm suggesting that before our next school committee meeting, in fact, next week we'll probably send out the dates, because our parent safety sessions went so well in terms of lining them up, we are going to replicate that approach. And so we're actually going to offer three vaping sessions. So three parent, and this is for parents, this is not for kids, this is for parents. And we'll do the same thing, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday type thing, we'll break it up during the month of note. First part of November is what we'll do in those first couple of weeks, but I'll send that information out. We'll send it out from the district level and we've already got a format, the principals have talked through some format and Lisa Gilbaki and I worked on some details today. So I think we're pretty close to ready to go on that. So we'll roll that out next week. The next thing, as Colin had said, was the Alice in the Safety training. So he was absolutely right. What the high school did was broke it down into grade-level groupings and that's how they did their training with, with each of the grade levels the other day. Our next step now will be to do work, some work at the middle level and some special work. And I know Jones working on this with some of our unique learners and what we do to ensure that they, they're safe as well. So that's the next level of our work. The flip chart, the infamous flip chart I keep talking about, is all good, it's ready to go. I saw the final copy tonight and so we're just going to do some additions to the front cover, but it'll go out to publication within the next week or two weeks. And so that's great to be at that stage, so thrilled about that. Website update, our Assistant Superintendent is taking the lead on that and he's working with a couple of different stakeholders. We are hoping that before Christmas, you'll start to see a substantial change to our website. So a lot of really, really good work is being done on that. I don't know if you want to add anything to this or not, but feel free to.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we've certainly met with building leaders to solicit feedback from them. We've given some options around formats for the website. We worked with School Messenger already, so we're in the window now where we can make a transfer to a new, a new setup, a new...
Template.
Template, thank you. There are a variety of options that we can, can choose from, so we're also soliciting feedback, we've solicited feedback from this group in some meetings. And we're also going to reach out to some community members as well, just to get a sense of what things, what's important information that needs to be on there and what are those things that need to kind of rise to the top while also being clear and consistent. And we want something that's bright and visible, but also consistent across all schools in the district.
And easy to navigate.
And easy to navigate. So we're trying to kind of pare down what those categories of information look like as well as quick links, as well as visuals, et cetera. But you can expect to see a change, like we said, prior to holiday, holiday time, a big change, so.
Thrilling. So that's...
Sorry, just one last thing is Cynthia Larson is going to be meeting with all of the, all of the people in the buildings that the principals have identified as those people who should be working on the website, those people who will be able to put information on as well as have a lengthy session of cleaning out, cleaning up the website and each individual school page. So by the end of this month, that process will happen where we're really cleaning up things that don't need to be on there and really then putting the things that do need to be on there before we do a transfer over to the new, the new page.
So lots of good work being done in that area right now.
So what we have, like, so one of the things that we had instituted on the current site was, you know, a way to find important documents quickly from the homepage. Do we still have an opportunity to do that?
Yep.
Because honestly, when we get to the point where we're talking about the budget, it's like, where is it?
Sure.
And it's too hard for people to find it in a finance tab and then you get up.
Sure. Yeah. So and that's why there's a, there's an opportunity for our quick links where you can go right there and there's those kind of, you use data to determine like what are those things that people are hitting on most and want to see most of, as well as a search engine at the top.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what your recommendation is for some of the things that we have on that homepage now if they stay or go. Because I do have an opinion, surprise, surprise.
So moving along.
Well, because we hear it, right? We hear it from people.
Well, not only that, like, we also do, we've also done the data collection around how many hits are coming on each of these.
Terrific.
So we know exactly where people are going. So I mean, that's why he's talking about data points.
Or where they're not, because they can't find it.
Well, that's true too.
Right.
We know, we know those low-hit pieces, so, yeah.
Okay.
The next thing, just a quick update, I, as you know, I attend regularly Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable. And this last roundtable that I was at had just a really, really good presentation given regarding LGBTQ students and staff. And it was one of the, one of the most connected, I felt, in terms of connecting the presenters at the front with the audience that they were dealing with. It was just really, really good. Several school districts have brought this organization in and so we're going to dip our toes in the water a little bit. We're going to have them come in because I really felt good about how they presented. It was factual, it was informative, it was just really a productive time. And we're going to bring them into a group of administrators, some of our nursing staff and some of our key counselors. And just to help support that and see if we can help, because we've got a number of kids that are, that fall into these categories. So I think it's really important that our staff feel comfortable with it too. So that's just, just to put that on the radar. Safety update, like I said, we've talked about the flip charts, I won't talk about it anymore, but all the fire drills are now completed. Lockdown drills, I believe there's only one school left that has to finish up the lock, their lockdown drills. The school safety committees have all met with the exception of Hale, but I believe it's on, on top, ready to go. So basically, the safety pieces are all kind of coming together, all of the trainings are going to have happened and I think we're in a really, really good place. Two items that are not on here, newspapers, I just want to thank our local newspapers for putting our points of pride out there. Was just thrilling to see it with the item, with the telegram, with, with both of our, with both of ours, Stowe and Bolton Papers. So just so appreciative, so thank you so much for doing that. It was really, the number of tweets that went around on those was really fascinating to watch. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So that is, that's the, one of the two items. The last item I want to talk about, just really, really quickly, I've already brought up last week, but I, or last time, but I just want to put something forward, but yet again, we work very hard to protect our students and our students' privacy. And one of the things that I had mentioned before was when we did our safety meeting in Stowe, we had a parent ask the question, "Well, you know, if you would just tell us if something happens, tell us exactly what it is and then that will put all the rumors to rest and we don't have to worry about it if something happens in one of our schools." And you know, the comment was made, "We can learn more from the police than we can from the school district." Now, what was really nice about that night is that our police department was right there. Now, keep in mind, our police departments work very closely together with each other, whether it's Stowe, Bolton or Lancaster, they all, they're a tight unit as a trio, never mind it's individual units. And they said right away, and it was Mike Sliess who was speaking at that point in time from Stowe, and he said, "You know, that's a really good question." And he says, "The bottom line is, we have greater latitude than a school district ever does." And that's absolutely right. And I remember this coming up last year and me saying the same thing last year. The bottom line is, they can put it on the blotter, their blog, all kinds of details, we can't legally put out there. And I think that that continues to get lost. We can't do it, we have to, as a school district, we operate under a very different set of rules and regulations and that privacy of that child and their family has to be protected. So we have to be very, very cautious with that. So I just want to put that out there again. And I just thought that night at the Stowe parent meeting was just, it was classic. I really appreciate that meeting, but I know I brought this up last time, but I thought it bears repeating this week as well. And that's it for me for my report.
That was rich. Thank you. Questions? Okay, we've got a couple of, we've got three?
Yes.
Three? One, two, three?
We do.
So I'm going to turn over the new business portion of the meeting to Superintendent Clancy to Superintendent Clancy for first our food services update.
Great, thank you. So Tom Hool, we're gonna bring up Tom to talk about food services. His passion in life, you do a great job with it. And by the way, I love the new machine, whatever it is. It's parceling everything off so nicely, I don't know what it is, but...
Isn't that cool?
Wow.
Your yogurt's not getting all soggy in the parfaits anymore.
It's just amazing. And it's something so small and so simple, but what a difference. And everything is just, continues to be so fresh and beautifully presented. You know, again, with the town administrators today, beautiful plate, a little platter of fruit. And it was just, it's so nice. So we thank you so much. And of course, Pat always joins Tom in case there are some issues with it, or concerns or questions with regards to anything physical. And so she's here to kind of support Tom. So Tom, we'll turn it over to you. I love the heart, by the way. I like this, this is very nice.
Thank you. So this is just a quick snapshot of what we do. As Superintendent Clancy said, I could speak about this all night, because this is one of my favorite things in the world. But a quick shot at how we're reinvesting back into our program with some of the funds we have in our account. We've put our free and reduced application online now. And to date, we're seeing an almost 10% or a 10% increase in applications to date this year. Our online payment system...
Can I just go back there for one second here? That's big. I mean, that's a, that's a big number, 10% for our district. So I just, I just want to bring that to your attention. And just to gain, kind of do a quick review of what free and reduced lunches are? Who gets those? How do you access them? For any viewers that maybe can help others that need access, can you just talk about that for half a minute, Tom?
The free and reduced meal program started back in the 40s. And what it is, is to help those who may not be able to afford the full price or any price to get a school lunch or breakfast for their students. Currently, we charge $3 for a student lunch and $2 for a student breakfast. And by filling out an application, should your income levels be in the federal guidelines, you may be able to receive a reduced benefit, which would entitle you to meals at 40 cents, lunch at 40 cents, and breakfast at 30 cents. Or even better, a free meal, which would cost you zero. One of the really great things, and I'm gonna get sidetracked just for a second, but we've invested in a new point-of-sale system a little over a year ago. And now all of that information is kept within that system. Our cashiers don't even know who may be free, reduced, or full paid. It's totally...
Discreet.
Secret. I was gonna say secret, but I like discreet, too. So any students who may feel, or any parents that may feel, you know what? I could use the help, but I'm proud and I understand that. But that's what we're here for. So I do ask anybody who has any questions, please reach out to me personally. The information stays in my office. It gets put into our point-of-sale system, and nobody will ever know. Unless you sign a waiver that allows us to share with certain, maybe SATs or athletic fees, or certain fees like that. If you sign a waiver, then we can share it with the people who may need you and even get that more help. The last thing we don't, what we want to see is a student not eating for any reason. And especially for not being able to pay.
And I want to go back to the waiver piece. That is only if the parent signs the waiver. Otherwise, it's never shared. But we do have kids who need a little bit of extra help with fees or whatever. And so, you know, that's when we approach and we say, "Would you like to sign a waiver?" And if they do, only then, and even that is very discreet.
Right, that's not telling anybody anybody's income. That's just, yes, they signed a waiver and they are eligible for a waiver.
And that's all they need to know.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
So that's pretty exciting. Again, the online payment system, where 80% of our payments are coming in, which is reducing the time spent on actually counting money and adding it into our POS system. Superintendent Clancy mentioned our new sealing machine. And we primarily bought that to help package items and to keep them fresher. This is an airtight system, and items can stay much longer and fresher and hopefully more intriguing to our students. And our long-term goal is to be able to actually vend reimbursable meals. And we're working with the POS system now so that if a student decides, you know what, I really would love a sandwich, I don't want to wait in the meal line, or, hey, it's after school and things are, there's nobody here, but I need something for maybe an early dinner or just to hold me over until I get home, they'll be able to vend a reimbursable meal or even a snack through, with their PIN number or personal identification number through our vending machines. And that'll start at the high school very, very quickly. We're in the process of making that work now. We bought new grills. We have one very big grill that we tried to move all around the district to do all our outdoor barbecues and functions like that. But after several ill-fated trips from one to another, it's... But instead of spending all kinds of money on one big grill, we were able to buy each school its own grill that we'll be able to share, not only during our barbecues outside and fun things like that, but we're also able to share if the PTO would like to have an event. Or Stowe has their fun cookouts for their class who's going over to the high school. And Bolton has that same kind of thing. So it's kind of a little goodwill, where as long as we all treat it nicely, we'll have it forever. So we were able to do that.
Sorry, I'm interrupting you.
That's okay, not at all.
The plan is always about open the doors and let them in, so.
Well, the community, absolutely.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Definitely. We invested in some new equipment at two of our middle schools. And hopefully, we'll be able to do the same even at our K-8 here in Bolton. We brought, we call them slides, they're a heating serving unit. So we're able to put hamburgers and chicken patty sandwiches, and students are able to come through and get a nice garden salad with that. And that way, it increased our serving options without needing to increase our footprint of space. And it gives more students, these students, more selections each day to hopefully satisfy what they're looking for. They may not want the pasta bar this day, but you know what? A chicken patty sandwich and a fresh salad and a fresh fruit cup may be just what they're looking for. So they're able to grab that and head out, which also in turn speeds up lines. We do continue with our nutrient analysis software. And it's very good for any students who have dietary issues. But not only that, but for all students to be able to find out, or parents, what exactly, the calorie counts, the carbohydrate counts, the percent of sugar, all that stuff, all that information, very soon we'll be posting on our new website. That will be coming again around the holidays. And on the bottom right, we were able to work a deal with a local designer. We started a breakfast program at the Hale School. Thank you very much to Kyle Grady, the principal there, who was willing to try it. And so we wanted to invest a little bit of money and make a breakfast nook. And our local designer said, "You know, Tom, if you're interested, maybe we could do some filming while we do the work and show them, other people, how fast we can do it in almost like a promo commercial. And if you let us do that, we'll do it for you for nothing." And so we did. And so we did. Now, we have this beautiful, cool eating section, or eatery, in the Hale School. It's called the Hawkeye Cafe. And we're actually gonna have a grand reopening. Kyle and I are working together. He likes to have something around the 14th of December, kind of a family awareness evening. And what we're gonna do, and you'll be getting an invitation to this one, so we're gonna have a grand reopening of our new Hawkeye Cafe. And the designers will be there. We'll have a free dinner sponsored by some of our food purveyors, who will take care of the food. And I'll be there to make the food, and our staff will be there to serve it. And then I believe Kyle said something about a movie night for families, just to spend the night together at no cost and have a good time.
Looking forward to that, it's gonna be great.
That's the kind of collaboration that really makes this job so much fun. We continue to improve. We've done a little bit of manager, oh, I forgot, I'm running the button, managerly assignments, so we could share talents and bring different ideas to different schools. Again, like I'd already mentioned, our vending POS system, the new sealing machine. And we're also in the market and a research point. We had a nice electric menu board company that we thought was the cat's meow, but thank God, we waited a little bit because it's not. So we're looking into some new and other kinds of companies that integrate with our software. So our menus will be up and flashing, just like at the local restaurants. And we'll be able to show pictures of what these meals look like. And again, that nutrient analysis component comes in, and it'll be more eye appealing to the students, but informational as well. Instead of looking at, "Today's menu is," that kind of stuff. So exciting things happening. If we go to the next page, you can see where our free and reduced numbers have gone up. And the reimbursement rates, which goes back to the initial part of our quick meeting here. So for a $3 meal, we charge $3 for a paid price. We would get 43 cents in reimbursement. For that reduced meal, we get the 40 cents. And between state and federal reimbursement, we get 303. And for a free meal, we get nothing upfront. And then we get a reimbursement of 343 from the state and federal governments. So that's that breakdown.
Tom, I just have a quick question if you're... I think I know the answer, but maybe I don't. This is just a marginal increase, but I mean, it's an increase nonetheless. Will it affect our commodities at all, or no?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Yes. The more free and reduced meals that you serve, the more US-level foods you have entitled.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And to put it in perspective, this year, we've received close to $65,000 in allotments for food. We spend that in a program that is run by the Department of Defense, where we get all our produce, or a good part of our produce from October to May. It's all bid through the Department of Defense, so we're getting it at the same cost as the feds. And then we also divert product, things like whole chickens, that we don't have the labor pool, I'm not saying the talent pool, but the labor pool because of our obligations to break down chickens and things like that. We're able to get boneless, skinless breasts instead of chickens, or chicken legs instead of whole chickens. And then there's something called brown box, where we receive things like vegetables. People may think of, ooh, those bad old days when pork came in a can and things like that. We don't see that anymore. We're talking, at worst, frozen carrots, probably packed by the same company that you use at home. It's just in a brown box. So maybe some frozen blueberries or things like that. And that's really all it is. It's literally bought back from the farmers of America. So they're pretty top-notch.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then on our last page, we are gonna see a slight reduction in meals sold from last year to this year. We saw a downturn in some of our sales. And that is something that we are addressing, and that's why we're making the changes we're making, to try to gain that sale or that revenue back. And hopefully, the changes we're making will bring those, whether they're sporadic purchases in a vending machine or those actually contemplated purchases, because students now at the middle school always know, hey, even if I don't particularly want the breakfast for lunch today, I know I can get that cheeseburger and vegetables and things like that to keep our sales going up.
Awesome. Just, I have a quick question here before you wrap up, Tom. I know that you've had a lot of interaction with our, at our state level. And can you just maybe speak to that a little bit? I know that you brought that up last year. Where are you at this year?
With regards to funding and things like that?
No, I'm thinking about position. Remember last year, you would go off to Washington to, for the role that you played? And that's what I was thinking of.
Yes, actually, I'm the incoming president of the school...
That's what I'm looking for.
School Nutrition Association Massachusetts. And we do a lot of work, not only to make sure we feed kids and students nourishing meals, but we also work with our legislators to make sure that the fundings that we need are there for us. I think, and I'll be honest with you, although we were ahead of the curve, back when the new regulations came through for the, with the new food regulations, unfortunately, the bad press really did some great damage to us. And we continue to suffer from that today. And even though I really wouldn't make any changes to go backwards, except maybe a few minor things, we pasta turns macaroni and cheese green. You know, that's, it's not something a student wants to look at or eat. So those are maybe the few minor things. But those are the kind of things that we meet in Washington with our federal representatives and share with them to let them know that if it's going in the trash, it's not doing anybody any good. Or if we move to block grants, the significance that that's gonna have on our programs. There's, there will be students who won't be able to eat, because once the money's gone, it's gone. And it's, there's some scary ideas floating around out there on both sides of the aisle. So we try to keep abreast of all of that, so we can keep our superintendents, our school committees, and just our fellow members aware of what may be coming and how we can work together as a collaborative to make sure, like our motto here in the show is, "We feed kids." We don't just serve kids, we feed, we don't just serve food, we feed kids.
I think from my lens, Tom, I just, you know, points of pride and, you know, so we talk about the articles we sent out, you know, the last couple of weeks. I think the work that you're doing there is really of benefit to all of us. So thank you so much for that, as well as what you do at our level, thank you.
It's a fun, it's a fun job, it really is, when you get to work with students and staff and collaborate. And I just appreciate the opportunity you've all given me to be here.
You've seen a big change in your program over the past several years. So good for you, and thank you very much for your efforts.
The support has been tremendous, and I appreciate that.
I'm looking forward to seeing some of the changes that you're making and how that impacts.
Me, too.
Because I know you're interested in selling the stuff, I'm interested in... Well, you are, too. I don't want to exclude that, but it's like, are the kids eating? Right, like, so my kid won't take a sandwich to school, but he won't eat, and then he goes to practice. And that vending machine is gonna be huge.
It really is. And this new machine, we're not gonna keep it this long, but because it keeps the air out, the product really stays fresh. And it could be several days if we left it there. I would rather only do one or two a day until we get to, once we sell two, we'll make four. Once we sell four, we'll make five or seven, until we sell out each day.
Would you just do lunches, or would you do breakfast sandwiches in there, too?
No, we could do, we can do anything, because the point-of-sale system goes by breakfast and lunch. And then we can include snack as well. So there may be even that extra reimbursement that we don't have right now, because there's nobody there. But if we can grab that portion, it's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
It's awesome to me.
It's exciting to me, too. You had mentioned that you had an intern that was gonna come in and actually study the food that was thrown away?
We did.
What happened to that?
She didn't do it.
Oh, did you?
No. No, she was fantastic. She chose a different project. And what we did was, I don't know if you've ever seen, well, even on the website or wherever, some of the pictures where she designed a whole menu for one specific day. And it was National Grill Cheese Day, actually. We did three kinds of grilled cheeses. And it was quite, quite the storm. We did it out of our portable servery. And we do that so we don't bog down the lines in the actual servery, but we give another point of service. And so we continue to try to do that monthly. And hopefully, we'll be able to do it even more than that with special events and things like that. But yeah, she, out of the blue, just decided, and I don't know if it was from her advisor or what happened, but I think from my perspective, because we have such a variety in so many of the schools now, and we still use that offer versus serve, what's the word I'm looking for, system, the students don't get everything. They take what they want. And as long as they have three of those five components, it's a reimbursable meal. So they're not all getting, say, the vegetable, or the vegetable that they don't want. They're able to choose the vegetable they do want. They're not getting the fruit they don't want. They're able to choose the vegetable they do want. And by doing that, the waste has gone down.
The waste, yeah, okay.
Tom, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Any further questions?
Thank you, I appreciate, again, appreciate to visit.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna talk about pupil services. An update from Joan DeAngelis, who is our Director of Pupil and Personnel Services. And I know that very often we think just sped, but that's really, you do so much more than just sped. So I know you're gonna focus a little bit tonight, so just talk to us about where you're heading this evening.
Sure. So I actually, I've looked at the Office of Pupil Personnel and broke it up into three different slides, because I think you're right, like, one component of the job is special education. But there's the pupil personnel component of the position. And I want to talk a little bit about the initiatives that I've worked in terms of professional development as well, with teaching and learning. So in terms of special ed, our current district-wide percentage is about 16% of students are identified with students with special needs. We were really busy, we had a lot of students. I just listened to Superintendent Clancy talk about the number of students that have moved into the district. We had about 35 students without EPs move into the district this summer. And I would tell you, probably between eight... I would tell you, probably between eight and ten of them had pretty significant needs, so, we have been able to provide those services in our district. We have some great programs, and I think that we're fortunate, we built programs, because we've been able to support those students district-wide, so that's really exciting. The HAIL, our new program, Middle Connections Class, is open. We have five students in that program right now. We just had our consultant, Dr. Robbins, he's an autism specialist, and he looks at students with complex learning needs. He comes monthly to look at our programs and give us feedback, and he was amazed that this program only opened a month ago. He was impressed with the teachers, the students, the schedules, the inclusion, he really gave us some nice feedback, and he said, the core of the program's already beginning, I can't believe this just opened a month ago. So, that's really exciting. We've hired the right teacher and the right staff to work with the students, and the students are quite happy and doing very well in inclusion as well. So, that's exciting news. The Transitions Class update, I have been working on this program, I think, for two years. We've really infused a lot of work in this program, because that program is our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program, so you will hear me say every day of the week, we've got to foster independence that translates for students being as independent as possible in the community, where they can, you know, have employment skills and have gainful employment. So, the good news is, in the last two years, four of our students have gotten gainful employment, and one of our students that's aging out, actually, this year, has been offered a full-time position in one of our work sites, so I could just cry, because I think that's so exciting. It's amazing. We, the space I was looking for has fallen through, I have been offered a second space in Lancaster, so I'm really looking to take that program offsite, and really make it flourish. But the program is very rich. We have about, we've added some work sites, so we have a student now who's working with a ZED teacher, who is over here today, in grade two and grade five. We also have made a connection with Brendan's Gym, so we have students working there as well. So, we really are expanding based on kind of what students' interests are. So, we have students at both Cafeteria as well, Slater's, we've made lots of partnerships in the community, which really translates to employment for our students, so I'm really excited about the program. But I'd love to, as you know, have it offsite, I think I'm getting closer. Unfortunately, the space that they thought someone else was going to move out of, that we could move in, they've decided they're not going to leave that space, so I'm on to site. So, I will keep you posted, stay tuned, but still, really great work going on there. This year, at the high school particularly, we spent a lot of time talking about after-school program, and enrichment for our students with special needs. We have a really lot of great programs, so we have Best Buddies at Luther Burbank, we have Best Buddies at the high school, Unified Track is very subscribed to, our high school students are amazing with our special ed, if you get to come to Unified Track one day, it's amazing. And we have been, we had other programs, we had flu hockey, there were other things, but it seems like there hasn't been as much subscription, so there seems to be less options for the fall and the winter. So, Katie Giannetti, who's the Special Ed Department Chair, and Tanya Rich, we all met, and we now have a unified bowling team, so we are off to Harvard Lanes on Wednesday afternoon with seven of our students. We have star bowlers that are coming, so, you know, I'm happy to tell you that the kids call him Griff, but Mr. Griffin, who teaches psychology at the high school, is one of our star bowlers. Today, Tanya Rich-Kamen was a star bowler with Officer Hool. We had Ms. Redman from our Transitions Program come as a star bowler, and the kids are really getting to know other adults in the building, which is really wonderful, so it's been really exciting. So, our bowling program is off and running, kids are coming every week, so I'm really excited about that. We are looking at, we're going to do like eight or ten weeks, and we're looking to subscribe and talk to the students about what they would like to do next. So, I'm hearing that baking and crafts might be something very nice they would like to do during the holidays, so we're really trying to have more enriched programs. You know, a lot of our students in the district participate in athletic events, or sports, or things like that, so we want to make sure we're expanding and allowing our students to have, you know, opportunities after school as well. So, that's really been great, it's been a wonderful experience. And Mrs. Giannetti and Mrs. Bell, our BCBA has, they have donated their time every week to be part of that program, so I wanted to mention them tonight. CPAC has been really active, I'm sure you have seen the brochure that they put together of year-long events, so pass this around, as I see you may know, this is on the website. They've worked really hard to make sure they did district-wide presentations, and there was a list throughout the year, so really, people can look and see, what am I interested in attending? They have time to plan, and then we send out a couple weeks in advance reminders of the presentation, so that's been wonderful. Our team chairs are sharing the brochure at team meetings with parents to encourage involvement, if there is a particular topic they're interested in hearing about. Last week, I was the featured speaker, Meet the Director Night, and that was a really great opportunity to talk about what the Office of Pupil Personnel does, and I had a lovely group of parents there, and it was just a really nice evening. Upcoming event is October thirtieth, is an IEP for my child, and it's being put on by the Federation for Children, and that's the next one that CPAC is sponsoring, so that's going really well. So, that's special ed part of the job. I will talk to you a little bit about the Office of Pupil Personnel. So, there's other elements of this position, and I could probably talk for lots of hours, but I won't. So, there's new SRAGs, Every Student Succeeds Act, that really has some impact in my office, so, the students that live and reside at RFK, you know, are part of our community, so there's been a lot, a lot more complexity in terms of us working with RFK, DCF, other districts that are physically responsible for students to really do educational and appropriate determinations around educational decision-making. So, I will tell you, kids, you know, come into the district, we are in full force, looking at how can we support them, what are their needs, it doesn't matter whether they're a special ed 504, a regular ed student, my office is managing all of those pieces, so you can imagine the amount of time that takes between getting records, placement, working with guidance. We have meetings set up at RFK between the high school and Luther Burbank, which is fantastic, because we have a wonderful relationship with them, but it's, it's another piece of time, and now that this new SRA reg is in effect, we really have to make decisions with all determining parties, to make the right decisions for kids. So, more time, but all good. The 504 process and civil rights, I'm very involved in that, I work with all the guidance counselors throughout the district around what is the 504 process, what falls under civil rights, what are the types of things that we need to do in terms of accommodations for students who have 504 plans. I have, I have worked with the guidance department, I'm really looking at 504 forms, getting more comprehensive teacher assessments, I've worked very closely with Jody Speck, we're looking to bring that team back together now that Lisa Gell-Bicki is on board, I'm going to let her finish the safety piece before we delve into 504, because there's obviously a medical component to 504 that we need to work together on. So, that's something that we're going to look to revive that group, to bring them back together. My office is a liaison every day to any principal in the district, so Brooke will tell you this, anything that comes up that's a parent concern, a student concern, student-to-student concern, I field some of those calls, make suggestions, sometimes I'm talking to parents, sometimes I'm going to meetings, I'm just acting as a liaison to try to resolve issues before they get really big. And I'm fortunate, the principals are wonderful, and they invite me to come to meetings all the time, and we work really well together.
If I could just say too, Joan, I know that that's probably an area that people don't realize how much work you do in that area, but you really do help to manage our high, high at-risk kids, those kids that need that second chance, or that third chance, or whatever, if burn the bridges everywhere else, you're that person that kind of makes them move in, or helps them, or helps them in a new program, or transition back into school, or these are the kids, for example, we've got a number of kids out with mental health issues that are hospitalized, that aren't sped, she's the woman that deals with all that. So, you're, you really have such a broad role in helping to support those of our children who are the most vulnerable and neediest, far beyond sped, so I just, I'm so grateful.
And it's hard to delve into that, because we just talked about confidentiality, but please know that that is a big part of my work every day, and students come first, and if there's something going on, everything else stops, and we focus in my office on students and what their needs are. The last thing I want to mention under the Office of Pupil Personnel is that we have a community partnership grant that comes out of early education and care, we're in year two of that grant. That grant allows us to provide playgroups and a parent education series to young children, so students between two or five, two through five, that may not be in a preschool setting, so our preschool teachers this year are actually running those playgroups. We opened a third playgroup in Stowe this year for the first time, it used to be Bolton and Stowe would come to one location, because we didn't think there were enough students, so I was like, I think we should have one in each community, you know, be fair, equal and fair, right? And they are all full. So, that's a message about parents want to come in, they want to interact with the district, they want to meet our preschool teachers, and it also gives us an opportunity to get to know our families and our young children, and we can assist with either referrals to early intervention, or that's a great way to do Child Mind. So, it really has afforded us some great opportunities to get to know our families that are coming into the district. We are developing a parent education series that goes along with that, so we really want to talk with parents of young children about a variety of topics. So, this year, we've planned a series of, you know, building communication skills, or how do you develop fine motor skills, and why is that important, or sensory integration, and how does your engine run? So, we have a series of six that we're going to be doing with our parents, so that, you know, we can stop building skills with students before they actually come into kindergarten. So, that's been really exciting work as well. Phew, I need like a breath. I'm trying to go quick, because I've been here a long time, so...
That's okay, you can relax.
Yeah, it's just, I notice a lot on the agenda. So, the last thing I really want to talk about is professional development, because I have a lot of passion for this work as well, and so, Martina is here tonight, because I know she's going to talk about the MCAS results, but Martina and I have really partnered around a lot of professional development opportunities together, because we want to work in concert on behalf of all of our students. So, I've talked to you about the co-teaching math model in the past. We are at full force this year, grade six, seven, and eight in all three towns have gone to the co-taught model. Martina and I did some data analysis this week, and so, what does the data tell us? So, we really have noticed some trends, I mean, traditionally, we've done this, you know, the majority is with our sixth-grade teachers, sixth graders, so we looked at the sixth-grade data, because we only added grade seven across the district this year, and grade eight last year, so we don't have two years of data to really look at, so we really just focused in on grades six, on how is this co-teaching model going? And what I will tell you is, we've noticed an increase in scores pretty significantly in comparison to the state in all question types, in terms of constructive response, short answer, and selective response. And we looked at two particular areas that we saw a lot of growth, was ratios in proportional relations and the number system, and those are really two great areas of focus in grade six, where we do a lot of teaching, so we've seen a growth by going to this model in terms of student performance, that's really exciting. Questions about that? Martina's going to talk to you more about the grade six and seven piece, when she digs into the data tonight.
I have a very quick question on that, because I know one of the many reasons for going to the co-teaching model was to try to close especially the math achievement gap for students with disabilities. Are you seeing the same kinds of gains for the kids with disabilities in that?
We are, that's the data that we actually did in grade six, so it, you know, varies between fourteen to sixteen percent increase, so that's higher, fourteen to sixteen percent higher than what the state is, so we're already seeing significant gains in a short amount of time. And the teachers in the eighth grade have said to Martina and I, they are loving co-teaching, they feel like they're both bringing their expertise to the table, and they're really seeing how it's benefiting the students, so we're really excited about that work and continuing that on. The LEAP initiative, Martina and I wrote a grant last year around social-emotional learning, we received the grant. We brought Denny Howley to the district late this summer to work on restorative practice with middle schoolers, we're really looking at social-emotional learning of middle school students, and how can we support advisory for rich experiences in this realm? No question.
Can you explain to people what restorative?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
That's why I got my glasses.
It gets very boring that people are understanding what that means.
So, this PD provides teachers with developing a classroom culture that promotes values and principles that use inclusive, collaborative approaches for being part of a school or classroom community, and the approaches validate experiences and needs for everyone within the class, and allows us to act in response in ways that are healing. So, if students are having difficulty, it's a way to come together and talk as a class of how can we support all? And really make a culture of a classroom, so students, you know, we all make mistakes, we all have difficulties at times, and how can we restore and manage those relationships within the classroom? So, Denny Howley works for Desi, I took her, she did an eight-week-long course last year, I took that course, it was absolutely amazing, and the work that she does in terms of creating classroom cultures, so the kids feel like they can take risks, so they can have difficulty, and not only can they get support from adults, but they can also get support from peers, is amazing. So, we're really looking to really beef up our advisory period at the middle school level, so we have another training coming on Friday, Denny is coming back to the district, and the middle school teachers are really excited about being part of that training. Questions about that?
I wonder, excuse me, I wonder if that's something that continues on beyond the middle school, or if that's exclusive to middle school?
So, that's a fantastic question, I'm glad you asked that, because I didn't write about what we're doing at the high school. Last, last year, we sent a guidance counselor and a school adjustment counselor to New York, and they did a training on mental health first aid, and we are in the process now, we've trained two groups, including an administrative group this summer, and we're looking to train all the high school teachers on the mental health first aid. I'm also on a social-emotional team at the elementary level with Lisa Gell-Bicki and Kristy Yellen at Center, and we're really looking at what social-emotional curriculum can we use in all three towns? So, lots of people have zones of regulation, or using paths, or responsive classroom, we're looking at what social-emotional curriculum do we want to use consistently through the district that will lead to that middle school advisory period?
So, it's also trickling down to the elementary level?
It sure is, so we're in the process of really looking and thinking about curriculums that we think will be appropriate. And then, the other two things I want to talk about tonight is, we spent the last two years, an initiative getting teachers trained in multisensory reading, which is Orton, Gilling, Kim, and Wilson, for students who struggle with decoding, or phonics, and comprehension strategies. So, we have sent many, many teachers who are now certified, that work is continuing, because obviously, people leave or retire, so that there are new faculty members that are participating in that training this year, but we have a good chunk of people already trained, which is wonderful. But the part two of that, for me, is really important, it's not just about teaching students how to read, but it's also infusing that across the curriculum. So, we have partnered with the Landmark School to bring language-based strategies training to the district, so our special ed teachers from grades three to twelve are all participating in that training, they will get fifteen PDPs, and that will allow them to bring their expertise of how to infuse specific language-based strategies into the classroom across content areas, that includes reading, writing, organizational strategies, and so forth. You know, part B of that is, I'd like to send a team of regular educators to that training as well, so I'm starting this now, and they're participating, it's a blended learning model, which they're really excited, Landmark came out in September and did some professional face-to-face meeting time, they are now working on the blended computer, on internet. They're using the computer-based teaching model, and then they're going to come back and do a wrap. They're using the computer-based teaching model and then they're going to come back and do a wrap-up with them. So that's really exciting work that's going on in the district. And the last initiative that we're working on, I've worked on this all last year with OT, is speech. So our speech pathologists have kind of, we worked their schedules this year. One of the things that we're finding is we have some, we have, in kindergarten, we really want to really build oral language development. So we have kids that come in with weaknesses that may not qualify for special ed. But that doesn't mean they can't benefit from speech pathologists providing intervention in the classroom. So this year our speech teachers are working with kindergarten to actually work on oral language development and vocabulary in the classroom because we want to build up skills and provide interventions before there's a gap in the service. So we're doing this as kind of a response to intervention model and that's really going well. And they're really enjoying being part of kindergarten this year.
That was the best update you've ever provided. Wow. Anybody, I don't know how the heck we could, but I mean, we could have you in for an hour. We need to give her more time next time.
Even this, I felt, to be honest with you, like we talked about tonight's presentation and I even felt tonight we were kind of whittling it down a little bit to try to get it inside of it.
Then you know what, then let's not, like, thank you for the respect to the agenda, but who cares? If we need to add more time, this is such an important part of the work that you folks do. Let's just add either, sorry, ask you to come back, or, well, you will be coming back anyway. Because you have to do early ed for us, right? And that's coming up.
I think one of the things that I really appreciate when I sit and listen to you, Joan, is if you've been sitting here over the past couple, two years, you should really be seeing it all tying together. All of this work, the early education, the early interventions, the consistent and continual training and upgrading for our staff, all these additional opportunities to make it so strong for those early, the early education classes. It's just so exciting to see the work that you're doing. And again, I'm going to go back to, I just know how much we value your work with these at-risk kids. I mean, I know we talk about it all the time, Joan, but I just am so appreciative of the work that you do in that area.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. So your role is massive. Wow. What are some of the things that you just don't have time for that you wish you did? Or places you would want to focus if you had more?
Or resources?
Resources, people, money, like I don't know what it is, but...
Let me think. So there's never a lack of work for me, but I have to tell you, the thing I love about the work is two days are never the same. I'm always up for a challenge. And if I can solve a problem and head it off before it gets big, that's very rewarding for me. So I'm not ready to like parcel things out and give things away because I feel like the comprehensive approach is really important. I can't tell you that sometimes more secretarial hours wouldn't help. We are like, you know, we kill a lot of trees in my office, God forgive me, because we're required to do it. We have to make paper copies. We have to have records of everything. That's just the way this world goes. So there is a lot of work and we have a lot of time constraints for things. Things need to get done in five days or 10 days. Things need to be mailed. We have 30 days to test or 45 days to have a meeting and get an IEP out. So those time-sensitive things can be really a challenge on a day-to-day basis. I don't know if I have an exact answer of what I would say, I could give you this and make it go away. I think that, you know, the complexity of working with complex students comes with a very busy job. But I hope my passion bleeds through, that I love working with complex students because I feel like if we can work a student, I worked a student through a very complicated problem last year and the student's having a really successful school year. That's enough for me. I don't care how many hours it took or if I had to do things at a different time. You know, if you make a difference there, their high school trajectory and their future really is impacted by that. So I don't have an answer. Sometimes I say, oh, I need like more secretarial help or we've got to get this out in eight days or, because everything is just timed lined all the time. So I feel like that crunch sometimes.
And just for the record, we have bumped up some secretarial time, but I just, I still think that's an area that she could use more of, to be honest with you. We've talked about, just to give you a flavor, I really respect the question. Thank you for bringing that up. And we've even talked about the fact, do we need a second in that office? Do we need like an assistant, you know, to help her out? You know, I know that you did a lot of retooling of a lot of things, a lot of components, whether the team chairs, whether it's ants work, whether, you know. So we are looking at, are there some areas here that we can help to better support the work that's done in that office?
And I made some significant changes to the team chair caseloads, just so that you're aware of that. So, you know, Katie G. and Eddie, sort of special ed department chair, did all the eighth grade annual review meetings. So she's a high school person. She introduced herself to the eighth graders and the parents. And now she has a connection to all those students and parents. The transition this year was like butter, you know? I mean, it was amazing. So that picked up some of the caseload there. We retooled the CLCF grant and the preschool team chair piece. So that has cut down some of the caseload. Like I need, for the people that work for me, these caseloads to feel manageable. I did the same thing. I retooled all the speech people so they could have time for inclusion and be in kindergarten and they love that work. But retooling and looking at caseloads certainly is helpful to my work so they are not feeling as stretched all the time as well. So I will keep you posted.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for asking the question.
I just, I fit for heat for everything, Joan. I want to do a time check because I think we're, we may need to move one of these items to another agenda.
We absolutely can.
And I don't want to take away from Pat and the FY budget timeline, FY 20 budget timeline. But if we could, because the timeline's in the packet.
Right.
So people can take a look at it if there was anything that you felt that you needed to add.
No, I don't, if anybody has any questions about anything, you can just, you know.
So why don't, why don't we do this? Because if anybody has questions about, we can either put it on the next agenda or gather up the questions, but maybe we put it on the next, I don't want to short shift you.
Oh, that's fine.
But I do have a feeling that MCAS, we generally have a lot of, come on, we generally have a lot of questions. And I don't want to cut it short. And I also don't want to cut you short, Pat.
That's fine because I'll be presenting finance anyway, so I can just do it.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Thank you so much for the possibility. And we'll rely on Alita to keep us honest.
Hello. So Martina Kenyon, I know that you all know Martina well. You all know Todd McQuire well. And so we charged them with going through, and normally Martina does this as a rule anyway, every year. She sits down with the principals. Cindy Larson generally has some level of involvement. Todd took a lead in this this year as well and I'm going to let you actually tee this up. And so at this particular meeting, we generally kind of do a broad overview of our MCAS. The successes, the areas that we see are challenges. You just heard Joan talk about some of the smaller successes that we're looking to try to get and this year got. And we are so thrilled with that. You know, I'm really thrilled when you take a look. I know that you're not going to talk about individual schools tonight, but some of the individual schools did really, really well. You know, moments for celebration, a gain, points of pride for us. So Todd, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of do a tee up here and carry it forward.
Great. So first of all, I want to thank Martina for being here and also for working on the presentation with me. We've worked on this together. So as much as it looks like a lot of slides, a lot of them are just visual bar graphs to do a comparison of data between us as a district and the state. And because there are a variety of tests, obviously at different grade levels, that's why. So it's a lot of visual tonight. But first of all, in terms of guiding questions, as we go through this presentation, as we talk about the results from a district standpoint, we're not going to talk about individual schools, but we are going to talk about the district as a whole. We want to look at how our schools or our district performance compares with the state performance, how we can leverage areas of strength within our schools. And I think we'll talk about that towards the end of our presentation tonight, as well as how our ongoing changes in curriculum and instruction reflected in the data. So first of all, I just want to remind and reiterate that this year represents new accountability data in terms of reporting out on results, in terms of what that looked like earlier this fall. I went over that accountability data as that continues to unfold for a lot of us and as we continue to really dive into it and take a look at a variety of the indicators that we are being assessed upon. But as a whole, I want to point out that the Neshoba Regional School District is meeting requirements. And just to give you some, as it relates to achievement, as it relates to growth, in terms of the high school, high school completion rates, English language proficiencies, and our grades three through eight only, as well as additional indicators that we talked about earlier as it relates to additional coursework, as well as chronic absenteeism, this district fell in the meeting requirements category. And that was only 17% of all Massachusetts school districts. So we are in the top.
Interesting statistic when you think about it. So.
So if you remember those numbers from earlier on, up to 75% meeting targets was partially meeting targets. And then 75 to 100 is your meeting targets. And it was those two. Neshoba falls into the meeting targets category. Only 17% of districts in the state fell into that category. And so as we continue to kind of, we can now look at other school districts. And I think I mentioned this fall too, remember, we're not being compared to those school districts that we were compared to in the past, that we thought were our neighbors, et cetera. We're being compared to districts with, you know, the same kinds of, who took the same tests that we did in the same areas. So that, those comparisons are different now. But as we continue to look at other districts and their accountability and their ratings, et cetera, it is notable that we fell within the top 17% of districts in the state.
So who are those? Because I'm sorry, we are three very competitive towns.
Correct.
And so who are those? I mean, you know what, I'm sure that anybody watching this would say, so who are they?
You're right. It's a great question and I don't know that they necessarily know because you have to comb through the data to take, you know, and that's going to come from them. But we used to compare ourselves to similar districts of same socioeconomic or same demographics, same size. And that has shifted and changed and we'll continue to do so.
I'm sorry, but I'm not giving part on this. I'm sorry. Not right now, but at some point can we find out? Because I'm going to get asked. I know it's coming.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I think my guest has a question right at the gate.
Sorry, Mike.
Well, you can obviously finish up your question.
We're done.
I have my answer. I have my non-answer answer.
It's sort of a question related to Lorraine's question. Does the DOA has sort of a tab where you can look at comparable districts? Is that current or is that from the past evaluations?
Are you talking about DART?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that, there's so many acronyms.
Yeah, it's DART.
You know, it's, it gives a list of like seven or eight comparable districts from a roster which is local. So is that, are those there?
Those were our peers before.
Those were before.
Those are the old ones though.
Yep, under the old accountability system.
Grot, sharing.
Right, sharing.
Actin' Boxer.
Absolutely.
No, not Actin' Boxer on you. Uh-uh, no. Completely, I mean, I don't know what it is now, but it never was.
Actin' Boxer.
But you can look at the state, the state came out with the data and the accountability ratings for all districts. And they have them from, you know, in terms of the target percent that each district received. You can take a look yourself to see who's also up in the same range as us. And it's those schools, those names have changed to get a sense of where other districts have fallen under the new accountability as well as us. Remember, those indicates relate to what kind of additional coursework are you providing students? What kind of AP coursework are you providing to students? You know, how are your ELL students doing at the high school? We don't, we're not targeted for that because we don't have the numbers for that. So that's where you have to look at, like the comparables change given that information. Does that make sense?
Sort of kind of.
Just while he's talking about ELL, this is just an FYI, ELL to his point. I believe we have nine students this year at the high school at ELL.
So we won't be assessed on that because we are, that subgroup is under 20 students. So we can't be compared to, say, you know, a Milton who might have 35. That's not comparable data. Does that make sense? Okay. So that, just to give you a sense on the next one, in terms of 17% of districts were categorized as meeting targets, 75% of districts in the state is partially meeting, 7% as in need of focused or targeted support, and 1% were categorized as in need of broader comprehensive support. Those were your level four and five districts in the past? To give you a sense of where that, where that stands. So we'll take a look at our own MCAS data, just to remind people in terms of the next generation MCAS is grades three through eight. That is the newer test that has now been in process for two years now. That's computer-based for grades four, five, seven, and eight. And the achievement level, so when kids get their reports now in the mail, they are getting exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, or not meeting expectations. This will be the second year that they receive those same, those reports that they received last year. These categories replace what was before was advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. Those were the past, the past levels that students earn on their, on their reports. Those reports too, for Neshoba, were mailed out last week consistently from the district. So those.
Make sure you hit that last part.
Yeah, those levels, these new levels, we cannot compare those to past legacy levels because it's a newer test. It's the next generation MCAS. So like last year, the big thing too was please don't take this year's data and compare it to last year's because it's a different test. So this year now, you can make a comparison to the year before because it's two years in a row of the next generation. So there can be a comparison made. But just keeping in mind that it's still in year two of that, so it's a newer, it is still a newer computer-based next generation MCAS test.
So Todd, is it the evaluation levels, the advanced compared to exceeding expectations? That's not comparable or can you not take the current next generation scores for the past couple of years and compare them to scores three, four, five years ago?
Both.
So we were not able to say whether the next generation has been good to us or bad to us.
Correct. I think we don't have enough data to make that determination. And remember, the high school has yet to even go into the next generation MCAS and they will do that this spring. We did a pilot of it last spring, but it was just a pilot with a select amount of students that obviously did not count. Yeah. So these are just next, these are just bar grids to show you achievement levels, grades three through eight, ELA. That's English Language Arts from the district perspective, grades three through eight, just to give you a sense of where the district is compared to where the state is. And these are really just for you to look in and digest. These are also in your packets as well. But to give you a sense of the amount of, the amount of students here in our district who are exceeding and meeting expectations versus the state level. Martina's also going to talk about the scatter plot grids later on and to give you a sense of, you know, when you, when you reach these, these targets, remember, Neshoba's a high-performing district. The target they set for us is already way up here. And so like for us to be exceeding expectations, we've got to beat that target that they've set, which is already up here. So keep that in mind and you'll see that on the graph we provide for you at the end to give you that sense, to show you where we fall, as high as we fall. So they set a target for us. It could be 98%, which is outstanding. But if we come in at 97% this year, we'll say, ah, you just missed your target. So keep that in mind. That's still outstanding and high performing, which is why we're in the top 17% of districts in the state. But I want to reiterate that, that the achievement level here in the district is outstanding. But you can go to the next one. This is for math three through eight, very similar bar graph as you compare the district to the state. You've got, you know, overwhelming amount of students that are meeting expectations as well as exceeding. And then these are all grades for science, technology, and engineering. Remember, STEM test is a, you know, is a newer, newer test. But again, the district comparison to the state. And then Martina's going to talk about these graph, graphing plots, if you will, plot numbers on the graph, whatever you want to call them.
Martina, I just have a quick question before we go into this. So the scatter plot for growth, that's pretty much similar to what was in the past though. The other pieces aren't, but this one piece looks very similar.
Yes, there's a slight change, but only in that the bottom, the horizontal, they started measuring the student growth percentile by a different statistical feature. It's the mean instead of a different one, but it is basically the same.
Because it looks identical.
Yeah. And so because we're so high achieving, we still look for trends in terms of our pushing forward and making sure that we're growing and achieving. So we wanted to put up this graph just to represent another way that we look at the data holistically. This graph compares our district's, our district's overall performance regarding achievement, which is the percent of students meeting and exceeding expectations and comparing that to the amount of growth that we're seeing as a district. Ideally, we're in the top right portion of that graph. We look to ensure that we continue to be in the top right, ever pushing forward into the top right. And that is really the way that we look at making sure that we continue to progress as a district.
Martina, what's SGP? I'm not getting what the.
Student growth.
Student growth.
Yep, that's the student growth percentage.
Oh, so that's the one that we can't, okay.
So the student growth percentile is another way to measure students' progress. It's a way to look at how a student did compared to themselves and a smaller peer group from one year to the next. And it gives you a perspective on even if achievement levels look different from year to year, has that student gained more overall in comparison to his, his or her local peers?
So because if I look at this, and this may get back to what Todd was talking about. If I look at this, it looks like, oh, it's 55, 58. We are. But is that what, is, is that what you were referring to, what we're comparing to already high performing? So that the gap between last year and this year is smaller than if we were? I, I need to understand that a little better.
And just to give you a flavor, the other thing that you would need to know is there are any number of districts down here.
No, totally understand it, but I, I want to understand, you know, again, you know, you want to be in the upper right-hand quadrant. Everybody wants to the Gartner Magic Quadrant, right? But it is, right? But so.
So this, so this represents like, this is the percent of students in our district who are meeting or exceeding the expectation, which is outstanding, which is outstanding. So we're way up there, 75%. This bottom is measuring student growth. And they track student growth from, say, last year to this year.
Right.
And what, when, what that looks like. So as I was explaining, sometimes, you know, the growth, it's, there's no growth because we're up there already. So it looks like a lower score. But keep in mind that it's very, very hard to compare. There's no data from the, the new, the new test from last year, particularly for high school kids. And this is a new accountability system. So keep the growth piece in perspective because it's hard. And they even said that, that it's hard to measure, you know, the student growth piece this year because it's the first year of accountability. And for grades three through eight, only the second year of next generation. And grade 10 hasn't even started yet, which is why most of the data in the bar graph was all three through eight.
Except then when we get two slides down.
Right.
Okay.
So Martina will continue.
No, that's great. And I did want to say too, with all that in mind, we are at about an average of 60 or a little less. That's actually considered very strong growth. So given where we are, we're particularly proud of that because, because we are already so high achieving. The fact that our students are continuing to push forward in comparison with their peers is really something to be proud of.
And I, and under this new accountability system too, we're very used to seeing the numbers 97, 98. Like these numbers have changed and we look at, oh, 77% we're meeting targets. That's, it is outstanding, but we look at a 77 as not a great number. Or we look at a 68, but those are great numbers in comparison to everyone else. And that's just that, the way in which the accountability system is changing. And I do think that's hard for us to wrap around because when we first got our results, we, you know, we, we were texting immediately.
How do you ever, with this new system, get into the upper right-hand quadrant?
Well, we are in the upper right-hand quadrant.
No, no, I know we are. I'm not being critical. I'm just trying to.
Further along.
I'm trying to draw stuff out from people that are watching.
You're absolutely right. And if you are the district that is saying, you know, number one or, you know.
You're in trouble. How are you going to get that again and again and again?
They could be lower than that, actually, because they haven't met their target.
Well, how will, how will the new growth targets be assessed? Because if, let's say you're at an old 98%, your new growth target might be 98%.
Correct.
It could be like, hey, if you guys stay the same, you're so good, just stay the same. That'll be your target. No?
Yeah, no. They're going to, they're going to say, here's your, here's your next benchmark.
Based on a projection, essentially.
It is going to be increasingly difficult for the show to move along that X, X.
Right.
We're up against, we're almost up against the goal.
And that's what really hasn't changed. Because that was the same with the old, the old accountability system and the old, you know, the, the, the other tests where we, we ran into that a lot and be like, ah, there's no room for us to grow. And we are being, our accountability data comes down on how much growth have you made? And it's hard to grow when you're already at the top.
So we look for small successes. We know that that's more important for all of our subgroups.
Which I think is a good point. Yeah, especially in subgroups like Joan and Martina talked about, the co-teaching and the successes that are happening at middle school math. You know, we were able to see that growth when we took a look at, really dive into, into the data.
So this was the English Language Arts achievement versus growth for grades three through eight. And it looks almost identical. That's the math achievement versus growth for grades three through eight. So again, similarly, we're in the top right quadrant, again, above that 70% meeting and exceeding and around a 60% growth percentile. Here's ELA for grade 10 specifically. So this is again, an area where the bar is set super high. The statewide bar is set is pretty high too. That's what the other, the X in this graph represents. But we continue to be proud of this data. We saw a similar looking graph last year. And I think it's just representative of the great statistics that we have in this district.
Just one, I just want, because that is so high, it's up, you can see that it's virtually impossible to go any more. Does that make sense to you? That's why it's not all the way right, because it was already almost as high as you could go.
This is the math achievement versus growth for grade 10. And so this is one where in past years, we've seen it push further to the right quadrant than we are seeing this year. And so we're just at the starting phases of exploring possible reasons behind that and also changes to pursue as a result of it. This is the first year we're seeing that. So we're always, we always proceed with some caution when we see something for a single year versus a trend. But areas that we are exploring are how to shift our math instruction, instructional models at the high school to really capitalize on some of the smaller changes that they're, they've already made. For example, implementing routines around class discussions that they've, that teachers have put into place in Algebra I and considering taking that into other grade levels because they're seeing a lot of progress with their students in terms of their conceptual understanding as a result. So we're just in the starting phases, like I said, of trying to really understand what this means for us and whether to pursue any changes. But it is different from last year. So this is the English Language Arts. These are the English Language Arts and Math graphs of the district versus the state in grades three through eight for our high-needs subgroup. Our high-needs subgroup is a combination of three different subgroups. Students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and English language learners. So we look at this data very carefully. It's an area that, with all the work that we worked and passion that our staff puts into supporting this group of students, that we really do look to see gains. We're very proud of this data and actually have seen some very slight shifts in the number, in the percentage of students in this subgroup who are meeting and exceeding as compared to last year. So hopefully that becomes a trend that we see. We, I looked at the grade level specific data and it, it's very apparent in grade six. So I feel that that says something about the promise of that.
So you just raised one of my questions. Now that you brought it up, I might as well poke at it a little bit.
Perfect.
The, if Kathy Cody Anne were here, she'd be asking for disaggregation of data by grade, right? Every year she asks about it. And so I guess the question is, why don't we look at that? I mean, I know it would mean we'd be here, you know, instead of 20 minutes over. But I don't care about that. So I would be happy to come back. I would be happy to come back and talk about it. But I think it, this is the way that the state provides it. But I think it would be helpful for us to understand the underlying grades. How are they performing specifically when it comes to high-needs students?
I can, I mean, like Martina and I have, will travel to each school and meet with each principal and just look at that school's data. Like we, we went to Hale and we met with Kyle and we looked at six, seven, eight, and disaggregated all of that. And you can actually run your cursor over and look at each individual and the time that took with one meeting with one principal in one school in three, I mean.
Well, we don't have to go through everything, but I think across the district, three, four, five. I mean, it would be good to see an aggregate, I mean, a chart similar to this so that we, because I think that that's, I, I would like to know because it's nice. I mean, I don't know if grade eight is outperforming everybody else and they're, you know, pulling everybody up or if grade five is really having problems. And it's not that we would question you folks because we know you're turning your attention there immediately. But it would be helpful for us to know. Specifically, if you're going to come forward at the budget season and say, we really need some support here, here, or here. Remember when we referenced the MCAS, right? I mean, I think it would be helpful to see some of that. I don't want to over-engineer, but I do think it would be valuable for us to see some.
I think too, I, I just, I feel thinking along those lines too. I just want to point out, like I brought up earlier, the nine students at the high school for our ELL. But we've seen a very high increase in the ELL in Lancaster this year. We are sitting, I don't know what it's at today, 28, 29?
Yeah.
Just in Lancaster, yes.
Just in Lancaster. Bolton is sitting at 17. I don't know what's gone, but it was at 17 last week. And between the two, two buildings in Stowe, we're at about 27. So know that that particular subgroup, even though it's very small at the high school right now, is definitely much larger in our elementary schools. So just as an FYI, that's all.
So what can you do for us to give us that disaggregated data?
We can talk about it. We can break something down, bring something further back.
Would you guys want to, I mean, because if it's just me, let it go. But would you guys want to see that at all?
Even if it was just, I mean, even if you're just looking at middle school level versus elementary level, if there's a disparity there, that's something that has value. So, so the data up here doesn't tell the whole story. It tells, tells the 10,000-foot view, but it doesn't get into the specifics.
Right. I'd like to see it by grade. Is that problematic or do you have it?
Oh, I don't think it's problematic.
How do you folks feel? Because I, I, you know, I want to stay here, sit here tonight.
I mean, I think particularly, you know, talking about the co-teaching model, for example. And, you know, we've heard how much the teacher, I've heard at, when I went to CPAC meetings, how much the teachers loved it. And how much, you know, teachers are wanting to do it in other content areas. And certainly to be able to say, oh, hey, we're going to expand it because of X, Y, and Z. And we saw how well it worked for a grade six, seven, and eight in math. So now, you know, in grade four, we're going to be doing this to address this problem. I think that'll be helpful information and make it, you know, once we do come to budget time.
That's good stuff.
It's great stuff. It'll be, it'll be a long meeting.
It'll give you another chance to say, these are the good things that we're doing. Because I'm sure, like I said before, you folks have already identified, okay, next year we're zeroing in here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sit back. We can sit back down and do a revamp and break it down further.
And y'all just need to be ready for another extra one. Thank you.
Yeah, I will review that.
Yeah, you just said you wanted it.
I'll review the graphs. I think it would be useful.
And, you know, the accountability data that this, this, all of this did, you know, is public information. You can't go on the desk.
You can go on the desk.
Really comb through and, and.
Yeah, we could do that, bud.
Yeah. Like Mike asked for it for the last time, the last meeting, and I sent them the link from last year's. And so you can't.
But I think it would be helpful for our families and our community to understand, especially because there's a new process, a new system in place. And frankly, if we're doing really well, again, we're very committed, competitive communities. And we want to know, where are you folks going next? I think it's just a way to be inclusive.
I'm going to tell you.
Rock on.
Well, I think too, before we go, there is a difference between just looking at the graphs and having somebody like Todd.
Oh, yeah.
To explain the graphs and why they look the way that they do. So I think that there's something to be said about coming back and taking another look.
Thank you.
Okay.
So before we finish with our next steps, we also wanted to just share the MCAS dates for this year. So as you're probably aware, our MCAS testing season is this spring. And the dates are listed here. I'm not going to go through them. I did want to highlight that this year, for the first time, all grades three through eight classes will be computer-based. And that's been a slow rollout. In addition, 10th grade math and ELA will be computer-based for the first time under a new assessment system. So the only assessment that this year will not be computer-based is the high school science, technology, engineering set of MCAS assessments. And that's coming up next year and everything will be, so.
This is great.
With that in mind, I'll say the second bullet first. That we do obviously plan to continue to support our teachers and students for the computer-based testing environment. And we've gotten great feedback on the way in which that support was provided last year in terms of the professional development and also in-class student work that, with practice assessments and other assessment systems that we've put in place. So we expect to continue rolling that out to the remaining two elementary and middle grade levels this year and also bring in the high school. The math department piloted the computer-based MCAS last year at the high school. ELA has no experience with it, so we're definitely going to be focusing there in terms of.
I just wanted to bring up that change. When you go from computer-based to computer-based model for testing, standardized testing, there's training involved in that too for kids, which is why they only highlighted it last year with 10th graders. So there's, I mean, I, credit to the tech team to get into those schools and make sure all of those machines are working. And we train kids how to get on there and take those tests now in a new environment because that obviously has impact on how they do on those, on those tests.
And I just want to make, make sure that we also highlight that you'll remember my level of anxiety in the first year here. You'll recall that when I realized that you hadn't done anything with Pearson or Park before. And I thought, oh my gosh, how are we going to do this? And, you know, I, I think as I gain one of those moments on time where we sat back and said, let's be thoughtful. Let's plan strategically. Let's take our time in rolling this out. And here we see the first of that labor. And so now you're able to replicate that. And I'm just, I'm beyond thrilled at the approach that was taken with all of this because it definitely exceeded any expectations I had. So thank you to everybody that was involved. Because it's the, it's a tech team. I, I agree with that. But it was also that other huge piece of PD and developing our stuff and has off-door stuff.
Yeah, and we provide ongoing PD even to grades that have experienced it to support new teachers. So we want to make sure that our support is comprehensive for both students and teachers.
You do a great job with it.
Another next step, which was similar last year. We do go and meet with each of the school principals individually. But we actually, last year also started bringing them together as a group. The purpose behind that was really that idea of identifying strengths within our district. This year, the first conversation we had focused a lot on, okay, how can we get students, teachers into other teachers' classrooms? Particularly if we're seeing areas of strength. The principals provide a lot of context for different structures that are in place there. And so that's work that we have ongoing, that we're just in the beginning phases of supporting in terms of the time to develop that. But we're really excited about it. We want to make sure that we're kind of cross-tominating the, the great work that's happening throughout our district. So another next step is to continue learning about the new accountability system and the Neshoba targets. You know, it's so new. You've learned about it as, at the same time as we have essentially. It's just that new. So just making sure that we really fully understand what's expected of us, what the targets, what the targets mean so that we can have that perspective as we determine what the best, what we feel is the best next step to take in that area. From a curriculum perspective, as I already shared, we'll look more closely at our STEM instructional models at the high school. Again, just to make sure that we're continuing to push forward with our students and the best possible opportunities for growth. And then, as already mentioned, we're seeing a lot of promise in terms of the co-teaching models at the middle school in, in math. So we want to continue to support that. And then also the literacy work that was started two years ago at the elementary level. And that we're actually starting to see in fields at the secondary level. We're really excited to continue to support that. We think that's.
That ELA is like through the roof.
Yeah, and we think it's really good.
It's really good. And the, the math PD that was offered over this past summer is outstanding, professional about that. Because I've worked with the same groups in the past and the, the teachers are just grieving about it. And to go into classrooms and have kids stand up and explain to me how they, how they show. to me how they, how they show what four fives are or what five fives are, and there's multiple ways to do that and explain their thinking, that's a part of that PD that helps kids critically think on those kinds of assessments as well as in every day in the classroom.
Mike has a question.
Sort of a comment and then a question, or a question and a comment, but I guess the, the question that I have is, are we, are we revisiting or reconsidering how we are servicing the high-needs kids and, and their scores? And that would be another example. A comment is that would be another example of saying, "Well, let's unpack high-needs. Where are our biggest challenges? Are they with the ELLs? Are they with kids with disabilities?" And so that's another example of what we'd want to like sort of spread that out.
So I'm not sure if that's a question to ask, but that certainly, we look, we look at that, we certainly break that down.
We definitely do.
We absolutely do. And that information is presented throughout, whether it's to the principals, while it's good to go to the, the principals have already looked at this stuff, they've been looking at this stuff since it was the summer, quite frankly, you know, in the first raw data that came out. But that's something that goes beyond that. We'll go to Joan, go to the team chairs, we'll go to the teachers. So yes, that, that infiltrates our work.
And so that's, that's part of our, our next steps and our goals or to meet, meet those high-needs.
We're part of that.
Yeah.
So when they have the data teams, I actually go to the data teams and there's other people, especially teachers and the principals are involved in those.
And the, and the high school with the high-needs students on the MCAS has been a challenge for us in the past. So at a minimum, I would really like to see the, the high school broken out. I think all of, sorry, or just, yeah, because, because it's, because it means extra work, but I think it's important that we see it. Again, Joan's got like, to Elaine's point, she's got a mountain of work in front of her. And if, if there, if we need to turn attention to, to that area, let us know before we get to having to make a decision so that we're well aware of that and we can reprioritize, right? So thanks for bringing that up.
You said you had a question, a comment?
I, I gave you both.
That was a fish.
Yeah, and again, I just wanted to highlight the, we're in the beginning phases of some work around choice-based reading at the secondary level initiated very much by the high school. But last, last spring, we brought in our middle school ELA teachers to kind of talk about how do we capitalize on what's happening on both sides of the elementary and the, the high school. And we're, we will be working toward a plan for a comprehensive K-12 literacy program.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
That was a great update. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations to everybody involved. Really appreciate it.
Really proud. I mean, especially considering the, the changing, all the changes and expectations that we're seeing, standards, assessment type, and then accountability. We're just really pleased and proud of all of our students and.
You should be. So are we.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Martina. Thanks, Todd.
All right, all bit of the, actually the world business. So our November meeting needed to move to November 14th and Alita was gracious enough to gather up everybody's input. Lynn, are you able to make the November? Because I don't think, and not to put you on the spot, but you're the only person I, we haven't heard from, so.
I think so.
Yeah, okay, we're putting you as a yes because we need the quorum. So.
I got a nose in there.
I got a couple of noses in there. Yeah, I won't, I won't out them. But, but we are right on the cusp. So it turns out that you can't give advanced warning.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, with the way November falls.
Yeah.
We're in a, we're in a deficit and we're starting to move to, closer and closer to budget season. So we need as much time as we can get. So what, if everybody's okay with that, it looks like we will have a quorum, then we need to vote to add a regular school committee meeting on November 14th at 6:00 PM in the district offices. Does somebody want to move that for me?
So we're canceling the seventh.
Yes, because that's veterans.
That's MASC.
Oh, MASC, yes. I'm so sorry. Yes. Pardon?
Do you have to vote to cancel that one at the same time?
I don't know that we have to vote to cancel it, we just don't, we just won't show up because it won't be, yeah. So will somebody please either make a motion or move?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second from Steve. Any conversation concerns? If anybody who said they can make it can't, will you let us know as soon as you can? Because we can give the commu, well, the rest of the members and the community enough time. Okay, all those in favor? unanimous, seven, nothing, we're good to go. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. And now we're moving into old business, which of, of which we have none. So I'm jumping right into subcommittee and advisory reports, and we've only got one tonight, which is the communication advisory. So I'm going to turn it over to Elise.
Sure. So we, I mentioned in our last meeting that we had started to have a little bit of discussion, thanks to Assistant Superintendent McGuire stopping by and appearing, he appeared again.
I just heard him pop in.
He knows when we're there and he shows up right when we need him. So we had set on our next meeting to start talking about what some of our wish list was for the updates to the school district website and what we would hope to see with our school committee tab and what we really don't like about it and, and the things that we hear from people when they can't find stuff. And then Todd showed up. And so it was like, "Oh, you've answered all our questions and, and all our lists." So a lot of the things that we talked about were just really, some of the things that Assistant Superintendent McGuire talked about during his brief little update or Superintendent Clunchy's brief update of the website is moving that important information up, you know, so that it's not, you have to go six levels into the website to find the meeting minutes or to find one of the subcommittees or whatever. So that the things that people want to see or the things that people care about are highly visible and easy to find and consistent. We talked about making sure that the videos for each meeting are easy to find, that people will actually know where they can, can go watch our meetings. And then we talked about, the big thing that we need to sort of start drafting is some, some new language, not a lot, but, you know, we want to have a friendly welcome when somebody lands on our school committee page, like here's, you're here. And sort of some quick links and what kind of things you want to say. The other piece that we want to have is the thing that I mentioned in our last meeting, which was sort of a decision tree, communication tree. If you have a question about X, go to Superintendent Clunchy. If you have a super, a question about this, go to your school principal or go to this person. When do you go to your school committee members? When do you go to the, you know, school committee chair? And what can you expect when you ask those questions? And so we will start to draft up what that might look like. But if there are sort of frequently asked questions that you all get from your community members that you want to make sure, I mean, we're not going to, you know, feature a specific question from a specific person, but, you know, this is a frequent topic or this is a frequent thing that people wonder about and they're not sure where to go, then please pass that information along to us and we'll make sure we include that in the draft of our little.
How should we do that to ensure that we're not?
Do you just want to have her send it to me as the chair?
I don't think that, I don't know that, because you're an advisory.
Right.
Yeah, I think it has to come to me.
I would, I would have.
Have it come to me.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll, I'll pull, pull it all on a spreadsheet and then share it with the subcommittee.
And that's what you've done before.
Yeah, that's how we've done it before.
Okay, that's fine with me.
I'm sure it is. And the work never ends.
So that's, that's basically the gist of it. That'll be, you know, sort of as we go into the new website and the holidays, you know, sort of making sure that we really think about what are the key things that we want to be sort of most visible to people and what sort of language do we want to use. Right now, we have the goals, which is great, but you know, sort of a, "Welcome to the, you're on a landing page."
And what our role is.
What's our role and where can you find things? Making it just very, very clear and easy for people to immediately find what they want without having to go hunting for it.
I think if I can just say too, one of the things that we talk about constantly is how do we make it user-friendly? Like that's just, you know, and how, and of course, we've talked about this before, too, how many clicks? We want it, we want to minimize the number of clicks that somebody needs to, to take them to wherever it is that they want to go.
Well, I mean, especially, this is one thing we talked about, especially if people are on phones, which most people are, you know, so many people access websites through their phone. And to try to get through submenus on your phone and click and click and click to get to, you know, the meeting minutes for the last communications subcommittee might be like three levels down right now or four levels down and tricky to do sometimes on a, on a phone. Not that I know of.
Thanks, goodness, Lynn.
Did the communication advisory, did their rule change?
No, why?
Okay, because I thought that it was going towards opening up the Facebook page or something, but.
Oh, were you here at the last?
No.
Too, okay, so I can talk to you about that offline because we've, we addressed that a couple of meetings ago. And I'll fill you in on that. Elaine, do you have anything to add to the advisory subcommittee? Thank you, Elise. That was a great update.
I missed or left out.
Yeah, that was great. We basically brought out a bunch of ideas. We didn't formalize a list that we're going to bring to the committee yet, but I think we're working towards that.
So one of the things that, when we, and maybe when we go into the next advisory, but one of the things I want to, I know that has come up and I want to make it clear here is when it comes to holding coffee hours or meet and greets, you do not need a vote from the school committee on that. So if, if Mike and I want to hold a Bolton meet and greet, we would just agree on it and post, or do we have to put, we don't have to post, we just have to let people know. But you don't have to vote on that. The only thing I would suggest is if you are going to look into that type of an effort, just as a courtesy extended to the other people in your town, you're, meaning the reps, so your other peers from your town, decide if you want to do it together. And I think that would be a nice thing, but just, you know, let's all be kind of like coordinated here if you decide you want to do something. But you don't need a vote from the school committee in order to hold office hours. Okay? So figure out the timing. But, you know, I want to make sure that this communication advisory, because we've never done it before, so I'm glad you brought that up, is not a restrictive thing. It's an enabler. It's a, how are we enabling the school committee to become more clear, more accessible, actually, more accessible in the right ways, which is why the piece on who to contact when and what does the school committee do is really important. It's not that we don't want to hear from the community, we need to hear from the community, but we can't always solve the problems for the community. So.
Right, and it's a big part of focusing on the website first, is really focusing on our existing communication, which is not always clear or easy to find, you know, for a number of reasons. And really, you know, and it perfectly dovetails with redoing the website. And really clarify and solidify our existing content and our existing communication. And then once that's clear and good, say, "Okay, so now what else might we be missing if we are missing something?" I think that would be our next role. But right now, it's like, what do we have and how can we make it clearer and easier for people to find?
I, I really appreciate the level of thoughtfulness that's going into this. I just want to say, I'm very respectful of how you're approaching this as a, as a team.
All good?
Good.
Okay, thanks, folks. So we're going to correspond. It's anything that is seemingly becoming more of a topic in your communities that we need to know about? And I don't mean one or two people, I mean like, there's a buzz.
Well, this is probably beating a dead horse at this point, but the vaping thing. So Stowe voted, we had a town meeting on October 1st about marijuana sales and manufacturing and all those different uses. And, I mean, that was our town discussion, but it also brought up again, are our kids using this in schools? I don't understand how this is happening. I don't know how it works, like all the same questions I've already said.
It's interesting too, and even for, for the schools, like when you look across the state right now, it's still pretty new because everybody's trying to come to terms with it. And vaping presents a lot of different issues for us because it, it could be tobacco, it may not be tobacco, it, it could be something other than that, it might not be, you know, and, and I think the other thing that I think we want to be conscientious of is that almost because it's such a buzzword now, people think that's the first issue or that's, that's a problem, or this is a hu, not realizing the scope. I mean, again, rumors are rampant and, and you just want to say, and it's like almost too big to shoot down one at a time, which is why when we talked about meetings, I thought, I, again, I go back to, I really liked our community meetings. They were really, really good. And so, you know, we had talked about just having one meeting and having everybody. And I, and I was the one who said, "I really liked having the individual meetings in the individual communities." Again, we'll open it up so that if somebody can't hit Stowe, they can hit Lancaster, well, then that's great. But I really liked that smaller piece so that then people could felt comfortable in staying back after and asking questions that they felt uncomfortable in asking in front of people. So I'm hoping that all of that will flush its way out of these.
Yeah, and I should say, I'm using vaping as a buzzword partly because I'm fairly ignorant about the whole system of, with its jeweling or vaping or what the, what the technical details are about it.
Jewel is the product name.
Yeah, it's the, the whole category, the whole concept.
Because we were, we had that presentation.
Tina, and we're actually looking at, just FYI, we're looking at bringing Tina back in.
Oh, she was excellent.
To these three meetings. So that's why I'm saying, as we were fleshing out the details, that's why I can't say tonight, we've got dates chosen, we're waiting for her to confirm if she can come back.
Have we ever done a presentation to the kids? And I'll tell you why I'm asking because we're talking around the users, right? And it's important. I, I'm, you know, hallelujah, we're having community meetings because parents need to know what it looks like, what it does, what it is, you know, how do you detect it? "Oh my gosh, I mean, I can't detect it. Oh my gosh, it looks like a thumb drive. Seriously, it's a pen." So like, that's important, but we're kind of talking around the people that are most impacted, either that are using them or are in an environment where their peers are using them. And I would love for us to find a way to engage the kids to, maybe, and I think the way to approach it is, most of our kids in, in these communities are all about healthy practices, healthy behaviors, but we should, I don't know what we're doing.
You know, it's, it's really an interesting topic. It was actually a dinner discussion the other night at my family, a small family reunion.
Did you have like?
On this very topic.
Forty-six hundred kids in there with you?
No, but I'm just saying, you know, it was interesting because we had a lot of university students sitting around the table and talking about it and saying, you know, this generation, this up-and-coming generation, especially at the high school level, I mean, it's so in touch in so many levels and yet I don't understand, and that was kind of the thought, why don't they understand how bad this is and the damage this could do to their bodies? Because it's all online, it's all available, but we're not, that connection is not being made. So I, you bring up a valuable point. I don't know that I have an answer.
You don't have an answer now to put forward tonight.
But again, it's kind of like the safety, let's take it in bits and pieces where we know we can chunk it off and we can put information out there at the very least.
I think it's, I think that, you know, Paul or Principal Vina Minico or a group of teachers who are well-respected at the high school, if they engaged a group of kids who are leaders in the school to start thinking about.
What does it look like?
Yeah, I think that you would see a lot more, I mean, you see it all the time in the work that you do, excuse me, but I think the kids, because I hear about it.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, and I'm not saying that it, this is a school-specific issue. This is a, this is a community issue.
And thank you for bringing that, that up because I think that that's, again, it goes back to, and I know I said this last committee meeting as well, you know, the gentleman at the back of the Stowe meeting who just did such a beautiful job of articulating, "These are community issues," and he was so right. So.
Okay, sorry, I beat that dead horse. Consent agenda, unless somebody has a concern, we're going to assume that the meeting minutes of September 26, 2018, and the warrants of October 12th, everybody make sure you sign them, 2018 are good. Items for the next agenda, Alita, we're gonna, we're gonna move that FY budget timeline. I don't have the, can I take a look at your calendar?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because I was bad and I didn't read one. Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Todd. So next meeting, we're on the docket for a school choice recommendation from the superintendent and then the school committee has to vote on that. And the vote is to, if we, if we don't want to offer school choice, we have to vote not to. If we do nothing, you know, that means we're in. So you have to opt out is what I'm getting at. So be thinking about what you want to do there. Director of HR is going to provide an update to us. The Leach field at the high school, my goodness, you're going to provide an update to us on that?
As far, as much as we know right now. As much as we know right now.
We still don't have any new information since the last time.
Does this need to move?
Yes.
It could.
It could, it might need to move.
To the November, I mean, I guess the question would be is, are there votes that you need in order to move forward on anything?
Not right now.
It's just informational.
Okay.
Would the SOI issue, I mean, if we're accepted, does that change everything?
I don't know, I don't have an answer on that.
But they know, because it came up in the discussion, they know.
Oh, yeah, they know. There's other things too that we're waiting on, on that Leach field, and I was hoping that I would have received some information about this morning and I didn't. So we're still sitting tight, so I think it's a good idea that we move that particular topic.
Okay, thank you for that. And then early education, so I want to be sure everybody understands, where we've moved, we've, thank you, by the way, for accommodating this and thank you both for accommodating this. We've asked the administration to provide their recommendation and it needs to come up through budget and warrant. We need to have this discussion at budget and warrant before it gets to the school committee.
What's that?
On the K and pre-K tuition fees, just for FY 20. The, what are we doing with K will come at another meeting, but the point was, let's get this issue with, will there be an increase? And the school committee made some recommendations last year, so what would that increase look like if there were an increase early to accommodate parents who need to make some decisions quickly? The what are we doing with K as far as, you know, Burt Universal or not, will come later because at that point, there isn't an impact on parents' financials. Because if we did do it, it's no harm, no foul, they would just remove their kids. If we don't do it, they're set for where they are here, so more to come on that. And that, we're going to really have to probably provide a couple of meetings worth of discussion for it. And then you've got Florence Sawyer and Emerson's school presentation and hopefully there's kids that are coming, not just the, okay, great, thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, last year was awesome, we got a lot of great student presentations. It just, especially as we get into budget season, it's like, please lift us up, bring some kids in.
Joel, we need the kindness club this time.
Oh, my gosh, we need the kindness club, let's just make sure we give them enough time. Okay, all good? All right, so with that, we are going to go into executive session and we will be adjourning in executive session, but before our friends in back post Stowe and Lancaster TV sign away, thank you very much, folks, for your help with us. Lynn, I'm going to ask you to get us into executive session and we need to do a roll call.
I moved it, we go to executive session pursuant to MGL C30A, section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant in aid requirements. Open meter law review of executive session minutes of 9:2717. Executive session will be held in the Assistant Superintendent's office, committee will adjourn to the executive session.
And it's going to include Superintendent Clunche.
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to be there?
Include Superintendent Clunche.
Yeah, you don't need to be, but you're welcome to, what did you, I think we should include them.
Assistant Superintendent.
McGuire.
And we'll call Susan.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, me. Steve.
Yes.
Yes, for a second, Elise.
Yes. Yes, all right.